Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the November twenty eighth meeting of the Roseville Area School Board to order. Acting Clerk, roll please.
Thank you. Director Bogaszewski?
Here.
Director Goggins?
Here.
Director Clark?
Here.
And Acting Clerk Two, here.
All right. Thank you. Are there any agenda adjustments for this evening?
There are no agenda adjustments.
Any announcements, comments, or recognitions? Point out, I think, okay. Okay, it moves us to summary of community input received for action items. Does anybody have something they'd like to share? Okay. All right, moves us to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda. We do not have any retirements.
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. And we have gifts this evening. Director Bogaszewski?
Yes, and agreed. Once again, I am pleased to report we have a plethora of gifts from the community.
That's a good thing.
So the first one is Trader Joe's gave a gift of food for family institutes at the Apotu Tetcha Education Center. We had a number of gifts related to the six-two-three walk-run youth scholarships. So Loffler from John Turner, the McGuire Agency, attention of Matthew Sandin, SFM, attention of Ryan Jirock, Vanderwall Consulting, Kennedy and Graven Chartered Accountants via Maggie Wallner, our attorney, the Highway Credit Union, Miatina Jones, Rosedale Chevrolet through Don Lusk, the Arthur J. Gallagher and Company through Brian Owen, Delta Dental through Kevin Janisick, Kraus Anderson Construction Company through John Hewnink, Eckroth Music Store through Sean Miller, Daniel Morlock, and Spire Credit Union through Stephanie Johnson, all gave monetary sponsorship gifts for the six-two-three walk-run youth scholarships. Costco Wholesale gave a monetary gift card for the six-two-three walk-run event. And the TCO, and also Punch Pizza on Cleveland Avenue gave a monetary gift card for the six-two-three walk-run event. And the TCO Performance Center Office gave a signed mini helmet to be used for the six-two-three walk-run event. Paula Bowie gave a monetary gift to be used for flooring at the Gaga Ball Pit at Central Park Elementary School. Raji Aid gave a monetary gift for the third grade field trip at Central Park Elementary. Wendy Thompson gave a monetary gift for use by the Media Center at Harambe Elementary School. Megan Caldwell Ganji gave a monetary gift, also for use by the Media Center at Harambe. Do Good Roseville, that organization, gave a monetary gift for winter clothing items for students in need for Little Canada Elementary School. Calvin and Shaleen Coleman, on behalf of Morgan Coleman, gave a monetary gift for the dance team at the Roseville Area High School. Gary Merrill of Merrill Plumbing gave a monetary gift for the music department at Roseville Area High School. Kyle and Rochelle Reckman gave a monetary gift for the weight room at Roseville Area High School, as did Janelle Gunderson, a monetary gift for the weight room at Roseville Area High School. And finally, Brian and Gina Corcoran gave a monetary gift to be used by the Industrial Technology Department at the Roseville Area Middle School. So a lot of generous folks out there, giving a lot of things to us, care deeply about our kids and how they do. So thank you very much to everyone for, again, your generosity as reported tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Bogaszewski. Moving on to our reports and non-action items, the Achievement and Integration Plan Report. We would like to welcome Delon Smith, our Director of Equity and Innovation, to go over the report for the board.
Hi, greetings, distinguished board. Good to see all of you tonight. Once again, Delon Smith, Director of Equity and Innovation. And as you know, I presented on our Achievement Integration Plan during our public meeting earlier. And so I'm here to field any questions you may have about that presentation or about the plan.
Go ahead.
This is more of a kind of comment question. You could comment on how that fits into our broader work, because I noticed some of your goals are very broad, but then the specific tactics that are paid for by the A&amp;I budget are the only ones listed. Like in the reading. I mean, we have a huge initiative around reading, but what you're focused on when you're trying to improve reading is a couple of elements specific to the A&amp;I plan.
Right, right, right. Yeah, so, yeah, good question. So, yeah, the Achievement Integration Plan is just a part of a larger system to support the goals that we have in this district, I would say. So, you know, it's, for example, we'll take reading, for example. So, you know, if our goal is to improve reading and to get our kids reading by third grade, which it is, there's a number of parts of this district that have to work in order for that to happen. And so in the Achievement Integration Plan, what we support around that particular thing, you know, would be our cultural liaison support, you know. So it's not just about the instruction that happens in the classroom. If it was just about that, then, you know, I believe we have great teachers. We'd have, you know, the kind of achievement that we want to see, but we don't. And so there's other components that have to come into place. And so, you know, one of the things, as I mentioned, our cultural liaisons and our student affinity groups, that piece of allowing students a space where they can be themselves and they can be in relationship with others who have the same experiences and potentially epistemology that they have, goes a long way into their interest to actually even be in school and their interest in learning more about themselves and actually wanting to prove themselves and being confident about themselves. And so that also plays into that reading achievement. And so it's things like that in this plan that, you know, may not be the things that we think of directly when we think about how, you know, we impact things like the reading scores. They do kind of carve out the edges around those things, as I think about it.
Thank you. I just want to say, Rose and I had an opportunity to serve on your committee and were really impressed with how this plan has really been driven out of that committee, rather than just provided to the committee and asked for them to look at it and provide input. And it was a really very inclusive and kind of a ground-up process. It was really exciting to be part of.
Thank you, thank you. I've enjoyed it as well.
And now I'll add, I think however you have formed that group, the members are just also passionate about this topic. And so to include them in the process has just been really, is really great. And I think people all look forward to those meetings to provide input and really understand how they can contribute to the district. So thank you for your leadership.
Absolutely. Thank you. It's an impressive group. I agree with you on that piece. We're fortunate to have it.
And we're fortunate to have your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate that.
I have more, maybe more of a comment, could be a question. I've heard both you and Dr. Chu talk about the importance of students having a teacher of color. And I see it, I like that we have it as a strategy. How do you think that's going to come about? Or is it already happening and it's something, you know, are we going to have it at Edgerton and Harambe?
Yeah.
The K-23?
Yeah, it's a good question. You know, I, once again, I go back to that, the first question. And it's kind of, you know, it's a part of the system. So we already have in place goals and strategies around recruitment and retention of teachers of color. And so we have those things in place. Now, where this kind of shapes off, shapes the edges up is, you know, thinking about where the impact is felt the most. And so it is about getting more representation in our teaching ranks, but it's really focusing in, as far as this plan, is really focusing in on getting that in grades K through two or K through three, where we've seen the most impact of students having teachers who look like them and who understand, you know, some of the things that they go through and some of the ways they learn and things like that. And so that's where this plan comes into place in order to help the larger plan of diversifying our teaching ranks.
May I comment?
And maybe just adding on it, I'd just like to confirm that this is all based on a lot of literature, a lot of data, a lot of research that shows huge success, better success among kids if early on they can see role models in positions of leadership and authority, who they can identify with, just from their own identity. And it is very clear that that helps all kids. So this is not just something that we want to do because we think it's a cool thing to do. This is really backed up by science and by what kids respond to and react to and perform best at an environment where they see folks who look like that in these roles.
So I was going to comment about the third grade, which I know Delon can talk about this. The research is very clear. So when, there was a research that looked at data of like hundred and fifty thousand students and looked at how they, what teachers were teaching them. And when they did that, they definitely see a difference between those who have one, at least one teacher of color between grades, first grade and to third grade or something.
Third grade, yeah.
So the idea of this is to be that intentional. If that actually works, what can we do, right, to actually look at the assignment to make sure that a kid, especially a kid of color, actually even more specific, especially a black boy, if you want to be that specific. That research was that specific. That if you could make sure that happens, that you, there's a over thirty percent chance of high school graduation and college attainment, or going to college. It's quite astounding. That's one of the seminal research that came out in the last five years. Very, like, based on data, literal data that is so clear. And then more research has come since then.
Yeah.
A lot of research. A lot of research. It's fascinating, actually. It's fascinating that they did that, yeah, the research.
And I would add, you know, that's how we landed on such a specific goal was the kind of conversation that we're having right now. But, you know, that happened in our Equity Leadership Advisory Committee. So having those kind of conversations led us from, you know, and I can't remember what the goal was last year, but it was, definitely wasn't this, led us to something, you know, a little more specific and more targeted.
And it's tough, because, you know, you want to attract teachers organically. So you want this district to be very attractive to a teacher who happens to be black or a teacher of color to want to come and work in Roseville. And that also depends on underlying turnover rates. And, you know, it's also a good thing that we have a district where teachers stay. So our turnover rate is not that high. So, you know, there you got one kind of pressure. It says we want to be a district where teachers want to come and work forever. But then, you know, how do we get slots that, as they do open up, from a teacher retiring or deciding they want to move, that we've attracted, in particular, a teacher of color because they are attracted to this environment and feel they would be welcomed and all that? So it's a, it's a long-term hard nut to crack, I think, that we're working on. But you've certainly laid it out and I think are taking the right steps with this, so, yeah.
Appreciate it.
I really love the hard work in this report. I especially like the RIS goals, focusing on some of those. I'm just gonna, I just had a quick question around RIS goal number two, increasing enrollment.
Yes.
Edgerton and Harambe. I love the strategies listed here. And I do just want to make sure that we're still on track with the Harambe Enrollment Committee. And that's one of the strategies still part of this, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The enroll, I think I have Assistant Superintendent Melissa Sonics speak more to that as she runs that committee.
Yeah, I could speak to that. So the Harambe Enrollment Committee was something that we started last year. We took around, it was a team that was made up of staff, of board members, of administrators. And we kind of brainstormed together as a team, different areas of focus, and then broke into maybe like four different subgroups where we focused. And then one of our plans was to check back in this year to see like what worked, what didn't, where are we making progress? And so we're not at the point where we've checked back in yet, but it will be a review that will take place.
Reignite the work.
Yeah, and I just, I was on that committee because of my, Harambe being one of the schools that I liaise with and that, you know, our own kids had been there. So, yeah, I already shared with the superintendent earlier that if that committee does get restarted again, I'd once again be interested in it because I think it is an important thing to do, so.
Thank you for serving on that, by the way.
We all serve on something.
Any further questions for?
Thank you.
Delon?
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your work on this.
Appreciate it.
All right, moving on to six B, summary of school board self-evaluation. This will be brief, folks. I wasn't quite sure what I wanted to say, but I will mention that two weeks ago, for the public, two weeks ago at our study session, I mean, every year the school board does a self-evaluation. And two weeks ago, we had a very free-flowing discussion, I would say, looking at our goals of the past year, looking at ourselves, looking at the goals we want to create for next year. We had some great feedback from Superintendent Lake, some of your observations and comments. And if it's okay with the board, I'd like to just read our school board goals, if that's okay? Just, you know, so the public knows and what we want to keep working on into next year. On number one, continue to develop internal and external communication tools covering progress on the strategic plan and student success. Number two, have at least two major publicized two-way communication opportunities for stakeholders to discuss topics of importance to the community. Number three, improve board efficiency through using flip presentations or Google Drive to archive materials and other techniques. And I realize that's more for the boards' own internal evaluation. And then number five, a true, kind of a new goal for next year, consciously cultivate a pool of potential board candidates and those who might be interested in serving down the road. So if I'm forgetting anything, please feel free to chime in. I thought it was a really good discussion that we had.
For the community to be aware, we use kind of the five job roles that Minnesota School Board Association provides as a vehicle to kind of assess our performance and kind of give a rubric of sorts or some criteria that gives us an opportunity to look at where we are on that in addition to our goals, so that we can learn from that and continue to improve.
Thank you.
The only thing I'll say is that, especially the one that is the external one, right? The one about having two, at least two, two-way? I mean, partly because oftentimes in meetings like that, we don't have that two-way. So it has to be intentionally designed. And we work along with our superintendent and the cabinet to make sure that happens. So I think, I think to make sure that we have at least two a year, to have that two-way communication is important.
Yeah, and I think that that does require a lot of coordination because we need a site presumably here, for example.
Yeah.
We need staff support.
Yep, absolutely.
And you can't just say, hey, gather and talk. We got to have a topic or a couple of topics that we would invite the public to come and share thoughts with us and have a conversation. So I know all that work has yet to be done.
And even when we do that, you know, we have to really follow some laws, right? Let's say, we don't have all of us all sitting in one table.
Yeah, right, right.
We spread ourselves out so that we are talking to the community. So I think there's a lot of planning and design around what those engagements look like for the board to be part of those conversations with the community, listening, right? Mostly listening, really listening to understand what is going on. We can answer questions as we are able, but that's intention.
Well, and even something like that that people might not understand, if we're all there, that's great, but there can't be more than three of us engaged in a conversation at a single table because otherwise it would constitute a quorum and would have to be, you know, then legally opened as a board meeting, and we just can't do it. So there's different weird things that govern how we can interact with the public when we're in a group, so.
That's why I want to point that out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to also say that we do have opportunities for community members to talk to us individually.
Oh, absolutely.
Lots of opportunities. They can email, they can give us a call, they can, lots of different venues. This is really, I mean, two-way communication opportunities. But what we're looking for is more on topics that are really heartfelt, that people are willing to come out for an evening, because that is a significant commitment. Clearly, safety has been an issue. One potential topic for the future that might be of interest is artificial intelligence and where that's going. Because that seems to be another real touch point. But if there are topics that individuals want to see or have suggestions on what we could serve as a topic, we very would love to hear that.
Absolutely.
But we have found that you can't just hold these sessions and people come. It has to be something that's really meaningful in order for them to make the commitment to show up in an evening.
Absolutely. Thanks for pointing it out, right? I mean, we can all be talking to neighbors, talking to any of our community members. But I think as a district to organize that over, for a topic, that's, you know, work and capacity that we need from the district to do.
And I like that reminder, thanks for all the comments from my colleagues, that we are engaging, folks, and the public is listening. We're engaging our neighbors, we're engaging people, supermarkets, we're engaging them all over. Please don't think that we're not. I mean, we are, we're the elected public officials and we're having many opportunities to engage with the community and public, and we are.
And to what you're saying is, I mean, most of us make it to a number of events in between board meetings.
Absolutely.
We try to be out there in the community, in the schools, et cetera, to give those opportunities to people, to be visible, to provide easy access.
That's right.
Thank you. All right. Now, thank you. I wanted to read the goals for next year. All right, that moves us on to action items. World's Best Workforce Report and Plan. We welcome Jake Von Deelen, Director of Student Achievement.
Thank you. Yes, we did have our public hearing earlier this evening. And so the board did have a chance to hear the report in full, or actually the presentation in full. So just wanted to let you know that. And the full report will be as a part of our board packet, and then we will post online that full World's Best Workforce Report. And I do have to give a shout out to Carrie Ardito, who does a great job of putting together and making our report look nice and put together and very professionally done. So really appreciate her work and putting that all together.
And Carrie's, of course, our district.
Carrie Ardito's our communications director. Thank you. And just a reminder that the report focuses on multiple areas. It has eliminating achievement disparities, kindergarten readiness, reading well by grade three, graduation, college and career readiness, curriculum and program review, staff development, ATPPS, and our overall budget. So a lot of different areas within that report. It used to be all of these reports that we would send to the Minnesota Department of Education. And so it's been nice that we have these just collectively put together and we can send just one report that we put together for MDE, so. I'm ready for questions, yeah?
I just had a question on the budget page. So that budget is the entire school district budget for K-12?
That's a really good question.
Yes, not just ATPPS. Is that, you're asking because the budget page exactly followed ATPPS?
Could be.
So that is the general fund.
Right, and in the report, it's at the bottom of the same page. But it's really, the overall school budget is not linked just to ATPPS.
Appreciate you putting that up.
That's what I was assuming, looking at the categories. But it also used a little different slicing or dicing than what we'll report, for example, at the Tooth and Taxation Meeting, Hearing next month, which is kind of an interesting way to think about it a little bit differently. That might be helpful for some folks, so appreciated that.
Yeah, thanks to Sherri Thompson, who put that part of the report together. It was certainly not me, I'm just the representative of the group. We did have a multiple folks that were here presenting prior to.
And I think the main takeaway, and you emphasized that in your report, was that the district spends eighty-six percent of our total fund directly servicing students. So I appreciate that point.
Any questions?
No, I'm just, you know, again, another good job on something that's basically mandated by the state, but at least allows us to show how, what we're doing aligns with that mandate. So I think that's good. I think that, you know, the fact that it's based off primarily our goals and key strategies to achieve our vision under our mission, it fits. And I like just the fact that, again, it's not necessarily related to it, it just reports out on it just the work we've done in CTE. And, you know, it's college and career readiness. It's not just college readiness. It's, you know, all the stuff we do with the trades to enable high school kids to actually work with carpenters and construction people. It's the auto shop, it's the videography and photography shop, it's the woodworking shop, there's a printing shop that's at par with any commercial printer in the metro that we can have kids that graduate from high school and walk right into a job.
Forget the drone program.
Yeah, so I think it's, we are, however you want to look at it, we are contributing to help our kids be, I'll say, a good workforce. Maybe I've been brave enough to say the world's best workforce, but we're contributing to that, so. Both from a college perspective and a career perspective, so I think that's good.
So I have a question. So, you know, we talk about all the progress of what has been done prior and then where we are heading. How would you comment on some of the quantitative data?
Like, have we moved the meter? Is that your question?
Yeah, maybe, yeah. Kind of how are we doing in comparison to the state in general?
So, yeah, I think one of the things is like we did, we do like a big quantitative report. Obviously, you know, with the achievement report in September, when I did come here, I would say that we are in different places in different areas. So like in graduation, we are certainly above where the state is, if you compare our district overall, as well as if you look specifically at RAS, we're well above some of our comparative and for sure the state. If you look at some of our reading and math scores specifically, we're typically behind the state. And we're also behind where we were, you know, prior to the pandemic. So there is, you know, instructional impact that has impacted over these last two, three years especially. And I do hope that we can continue to see some areas of growth. So we do see in some of our earlier reading progress, some hopeful signs, where we see some higher growth and some lower low growth. So we do hope to see that play out, especially in our reading. That has been a major focus of our elementary programs. So that's, I think, just generally, that's one of the things that I do think we'll see an improvement on. And we do also feel that that will have an impact on our math as well, when we know our students can read and acquire knowledge in other areas. That's going to have a really huge impact in that sense as well.
Thank you for that, just kind of the summary. Because I think it's important to think about, like, so what about all this, right? So what about all this? And so, so that we are positioned to say, as we look at the next year and all the things that we are putting in place, that we are looking at how, what is the impact on all those things on our students' performance and outcomes?
Yeah, and I think it's also, there's more than just the quantitative pieces that go to that. And we've had this conversation a lot. There's a lot of qualitative data that we get from our students as well, that we hear from their stories, as well as from our teachers and from our community and our parents as well. They have had positive experiences as well. And also, like, there is, when we compare ourselves to comparable districts, we do very well compared to them, so.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's one thing to know that, but I think, you know, perceptions is reality for some. And oftentimes, what we report on is what people go with. So some of the stories that we know about, right? We understand why people choose Roseville and why we love this district may not show up, yeah. up, yeah. So, and so it's, it's just kind of, it's not a Roseville issue, it's just an issue in education in general.
Well, and I think one of the things we're going to have to deal with in the coming decade is the decreasing reliability of quantitative data to accurately portray success and achievement.
Yeah.
And if you look at, you know, like, like, it's red or green, right? It's like yes or no, stop or go, red or green, ahead or behind. It's like, Jake, you just said, we're behind the state in math and reading scores. But, you know, I would say, subjectively, we're marginally behind, I mean, it's just a percentage of two or three, it's, it's not a lot. And where we're ahead, we're way ahead, and we're making progress. And when you couple that with the fact, as we pointed out in one of our meetings somewhere, that if, if that's judged by the MCAs, those are optional.
Yep.
So kids don't have to take them. And the participation rate was, was what percent? I can't remember what it was, it was low.
It was low.
At the high school level, it is really impacted. At elementary, it's, it's quite good, but.
And so, and so kids don't even have to take the test. And so the numbers that we're showing are numbers from a smaller cohort of kids who have self-selected, or their families have self-selected, that they will take the test versus not take the test. So the degree to which, you know, it used to be, you could say, what do the numbers say? The numbers are less and less meaningful, I think, which is, and I don't know how to deal with that. I mean, I really don't. You can't just ignore them. But then what is it? Is it a mix of things you do, and how do you bring qualitative stuff in? So I worry about that.
Well, measures, right?
Well, yeah, and it's not just us, it's every school in the state is facing the same thing right now. So how do, how do you really tell how we're doing? It's hard, so, anyway.
And you'll hear the district continue to reference street data and the importance of the narrative and telling the stories.
Yes, that's right.
I think is one piece, and I was asked the chair, acting chair, to make a comment around what we can feel good about in Roseville area schools, I believe, is the connections to strategic planning, all the work that's been done in terms of identifying our needs and gaps, and then aligning our resources and creating plans to address them. So that certainly has been done, and we feel very strongly that we're poised to make those gains, whether it's street data, quantitative data, and so forth.
Yep, yep. Well, thank you.
Thank you for your leadership, Jake.
Thank you.
Just a real quick question, yeah. Thank you for working on this report. I know there's a lot, and it's an entire team behind it. Just maybe kind of a question for the public and kind of for my own edification too, so we have, we, we have to take action on this, and it goes to the state. Just something I'm kind of curious about, would, would the state, would the state actually, let's say there's a strategy with reading by third grade, or let's say there's something, have you ever, I mean, has the state ever come back and said that we weren't aggressive with this strategy, or just, would they nitpick something, or just, I'm just, I'm just curious? They audit a strategy, just what's that process? I'm just curious.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a fair question. We, we used to actually get feedback from the Minnesota Department of Education. They have stopped doing that now because the feedback was not timely enough. It took quite a while to get, to process all of the districts, look through all of them, and then provide, you know, good feedback to us. Now, we do get, we do get monitored based on our academic achievement data, and so we are a, a district that qualifies for more monitoring under the World's Best Workforce Act. So we're not meeting some of the measures that we should be. So we do have an advocate that we work for, that we work with, from the Regional Centers of Excellence, which is the different, that, it's the statewide supports, basically. So they're working with us on a number of different areas and helping to continue to implement our, our strategic plan, and they are very much in alignment of those different areas that we're working on. So it's very supportive, a supportive relationship there.
Great.
Yeah.
I assumed it was, just interested in the process. Right, anybody else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the World's Best Workforce Report and Plan.
I'll move that we approve the plan as presented.
Is there a second?
Report as presented.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jake.
Stay right there.
That's right.
That's right.
All right, approval of new course proposals. Jake Von De Lin will stay right there.
Yes, I'd get to.
Thank you.
So we did talk about this during our study session, but just as a reminder, these are some additional courses that have come from this fall. We did do a whole slate of courses that came through in the spring, so these are some additional courses that we're looking to offer. And so I'll just run through really briefly the, the course titles for you, and just a reminder of what they, they are as well. So there is a course called Music and Justice. One of the things that I also want to mention on this, on your sheet that was in your packet, it does say draft additional courses. I'll provide you an updated list that's, does not say draft on there anyways. I, I hope it doesn't actually, maybe we still have that on there. That was my bad, so, so it should say just additional courses. But Music and Justice Course, which includes a new course and a course removal, we did have some feedback from DCAC that they unanimously approved the course. We have three courses that are a part of our, I guess, an opportunity to provide students with more expansive dual-language experience at our high school that goes for, in social studies. So there is the ninth grade geography course, a 10th grade world history course, as well as a 11th grade American histories course. And then there is an additional course in the senior year for our students that are in our dual-language Spanish immersion program. That's going to be a capstone project, again, for our, our dual-language Spanish immersion students. This just really helps to make a, a more robust program for our students, to, to have additional courses that are in that immersion Spanish language. So that's what we're looking at. We did have all of these now, they also weren't updated, but they also are unanimously approved by our district curriculum advisory committee, so I will provide that update for you as well. I just am noticing that before, before this meeting as well. And we did bring these to our curriculum lead groups as well, and they do support this in terms of, this is meeting some needs of our students and definitely concede the impact. There are some curriculum lead concerns around the impact of FTE and the loss of that for our social studies group, as well as some of the timing and process. It's with the standards revisions that are coming into place, they might have to look at the social studies in terms of, the standards are not final yet, and they're a little bit ahead of where the social studies review team is. So they're working on what that timing might look like and how they do that. And also then finding staff members to, to do that, you know, that are licensed with a social studies background and also have that, that Spanish, you know, that proficiency of Spanish. And so especially looking for native Spanish speakers as well to provide that for our students, so. Questions?
Actually, I have a question, not about the new ones. I think those are all great, but, you know, you also included the ones that were approved back in May, the cybersecurity course and the medical terminology course. I'm just wondering if those have actually kicked off then, have they been?
No, these are, these are actually courses that will go into the handbook for registration for next year.
Next year, okay.
So students will be able to register for these courses.
I just wasn't sure the timing, okay.
Yeah, and actually, the, the medical terminology course is actually a course that's running.
It's ongoing.
And that will have actually credit, college credit that will be put in place there.
Wonderful, thank you.
Kitty?
With these new courses, will they be available to students for registration in January?
Correct, yes. All of the, all of the ones that you see in your packet tonight will be available for students to register for in January.
And registration in January is for the 24, 25 school year?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was my question about staffing, right?
Right.
To ensure that as you have new courses, that you have the right people to actually teach, teach them. So except for the oral language and Spanish combination, my goodness, are the rest all kind of pretty much?
Yes, the rest of them were all proposed by current departments that have the FTE to be able to support those, yeah. The, the biggest one is the, is the, the Spanish immersion.
I'll add, maybe if I can, Jake, that we, certainly this process is to add the courses into the course registration guide, but we also need student enrollment, we need student interests that really drive us literally offering and running the course.
Right.
Just a bit of a delineation.
Right, so the course is approved, but if a very low insufficient number of students register, then it might not actually be implemented because there won't be enough to have a class. Is there, is that subjective? Is there a set minimum that you have as a rule of thumb for a number of kids that need to register for a course before you?
It, it's certainly subjective, like, we, I, we would probably most likely run a course that's a new course and try to support that course at lower enrollment, right? But we would aim for thirty students a course in general as a guideline to offer the course.
If you got twenty-five, you wouldn't say no, I mean.
It depends on.
It depends, yeah.
It's a really a large puzzle, that schedule at the high school level.
I'll add to that too, because if you run a class at twenty-five, then you're going to run another class at thirty-five, forty, right? So like, it, it has a ripple effect. That's the giant puzzle.
So that's where the recruitment coming, right? Kind of trying to say, okay, who, find more students that might be interested and get them, get them to sign, right, sign up.
Right. And then you hope the one teacher that's qualified to teach it doesn't get a better job offer in the middle of the term and desert us and leave everybody abandoned, so, yeah, it's very, such fun, right? It's complicated, it's very complicated.
It is. Any other questions?
Well, and just a clarification again, because I, I know it, but I keep forgetting it, the DCAC, the District Curriculum Advisory Committee, it's teachers, it's got a board, who's the board rep on that?
Normally Todd, I attended this.
Todd and you, and then it's got some public people, like, parents too?
Correct, yeah, parents from each of our, each of our sites, and then students as well.
Students, right. They're the ones that do the work and dig into it and see what it is and everything, and then they come with a recommendation.
Correct.
Which you've brought to us tonight. Okay, great, thank you.
And as we talk about trying to be efficient in board meetings, boy, do they run an efficient meeting. I mean, they have the video presentation ahead of time, so that the entire meeting was just answering questions and having dialogue. It was really beautifully run, very efficient.
I've been, I've been very impressed with those screencast kind of presentations, and we, we do have a lot of homework to do before every meeting, but it's, it's great, yeah.
But it helps have a better conversation when we're there, rather than having to just sit through a presentation and then get to the questions and comments, so we can dig right in.
Yeah, well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the 2024, 2025 proposals as been presented.
I move approval of the new courses as presented.
Second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you, Jake.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, study session report, very brief, because we basically have just covered everything. Two weeks ago, Director of Student Achievement Jake Von De Lin presented the board with new course proposals that we just approved, and the board focused on its self-evaluation and set goals for next year. That was the study session. In case anybody has anything else to add, I, let's move on to board reports. Who wants to, who wants to go first? Mike, go ahead.
Uh, I, only one thing, I, I did attend the Harambe Library Night. They had invited parents and those interested in Harambe at the Roseville Library over here to meet, and kids came and families, and they had snacks and pizza, lots of pizza, and kids could like do butterflies, right, which is the theme of Harambe and all that, just to kind of get to know each other, get to know the library. And it turned out pretty well, I think, a number of families came, a number of kids, it was fun. So I think it also indicated to me that, that more of that would work too, that, you know, especially with Harambe, and it kind of ties in the enrollment thing, let's do that more often, let's see, whether it's a library or whatever, get the community engaged, the parents engaged, so they even know what's going on over there. So it was really, really nice. The principal was there, he was there, so it was a nice evening. That's all I got.
Thanks for being there.
Okay, Kitty?
I have a couple of different things. Got, it was my, one of my, my turn to be on the superintendent advisory committee this last time around, our advisory board, and it was really focused on how to develop partnerships with businesses in our community. And McGaw Construction kind of walked through the kinds of things that are involved with career fairs, presentations on trade positions, they participate in Career Day, mock interviews, panel event for a woodworking class, where some of the things are involved in. And what I found particularly interesting, and I think is important, is we're looking to find additional businesses to partner with, is the benefit they got out of it. They really talked about the connection with the, staying with the younger generation and with future employment, or employees, and just the whole needs of that generation, understanding of better as they're bringing it forward, and they found it very much a return for their investment of time. And the question was, how can this partnership be replicated in different areas? And some different ideas came forward, and there is a file that board members certainly can contribute to with ideas and contacts that you might have with corporations, community that may be possibilities as we're looking to further expand businesses. And I think that might be a neat thing to put in one of our community six-two-threes is about the opportunities and the return on time invested for that. But so that was, that was really a fun meeting to be in. I know that most of us had an opportunity to attend the community forum, and I believe Dr. Lake will be talking more about that, but I just wanted to thank everybody who came out, especially the students. I was so impressed how they could speak their truth and, and share their stories. Was really, really a valuable evening, and this was kind of an informational session with some questions answered, and that we've got the next one coming up, if it's still December sixth.
It is not.
Okay, different date?
It's been delayed, no. I'll speak of that, yes.
Okay.
It'll be in January.
In January, okay. We're, we're really looking for help in terms of ideas to move forward with and hope that people showed up this evening or others will, will come and really help move forward where we're going as a district. Attended the Minnesota English Learner Education Conference on Friday the seventeenth. It was, we presented, the Roseville Area Schools presented on the work that we're, we've presented a couple times before to different entities around really building student success through partnerships with families. And it was well received, and there was some great discussion about that. And then I also had to tend, had to, opportunity to attend some of the other sessions, and it was fascinating to hear how multilingualism is really, the benefits of that and how that can be integrated into the classroom and, and built up. And there was actually another presentation from a Roseville person who was involved with embracing multilingual in the classroom, strategies for welcoming students' languages and leveraging their linguistic skills for learning. And we had a Rams teacher that did a nice job, along with a professor from the University of Minnesota, that really shared that and did a fabulous information session. And then the DCAC was the last one that I wanted to talk about, and that I don't normally get to attend, but since Todd wasn't available, had the opportunity to attend. And in addition to going through the new courses and that we've had earlier this evening, so I won't touch on, they also was a brief update on kind of the, the social studies curriculum review, and there was a panel of teachers from different levels and different schools in the seven-twelve area that was really answering questions, and the kinds of questions that the, the parents had was really powerful. I mean, like, how do we make sure we provide that balanced view of, of the real strengths and the challenges from our, from our histories and from our social studies? How do we support students that are reading below grade level, and how do we scaffold that and really build that into our programs? How do we really provide the rigor, and what does that really mean in terms of deeper or wider, and some discussion around that? So it was just the quality of the questions and discussion was really a fun to be part, to be part of. And then there was also the FACS curriculum review, and just one factoid that I thought you'd find interesting is that we've actually had to increase the FTE staff teaching in the FACS area every year since its completion of our new facility. They started with four FTEs, they're now to six FTEs, and the capacity of that new building is for forty-nine classes, and they're already running thirty, I mean, forty-five classes and they're already running thirty-nine. I mean, it's just. I mean, it's just a really popular area and growing. And I could see why. I'm living on your own, and, and some of the other, you know, personal finance classes elements in there is just so valuable and fundamental to kids. And actually, what we're offering will meet the new state requirement to be have something available for that. So that's, there was just a, a very interesting evening.
Do you want to say what FACS is?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Gosh, and I try so hard on that, I didn't even think about it. Family and commu- consumer sciences.
Is that what somebody my age would have called home ec at one point? Okay.
Yeah, in some ways, it's a little broader than that because it's also the institutional kitchen and, which is more of the career technical education piece than just home ec. So I would say it's a combination of the two. And what I found fascinating is that all of our staff are dual-certified as FACS and CTE, or career and technical education. And there's evidently, there's only two schools that offer that dual certification, but gives us tremendous flexibility and ability to what we can offer. That's really powerful.
Thanks, Kitty. Max?
You know, I don't think I have anything to add that has been said.
I think the only thing I'll say is that most of us were there at the safety forum, and I wanted to really acknowledge the superintendent, the staff who were there. Really, the amount of preparation that it took to prepare that evening, to show, kind of like, right, it was informational, so to kind of say, this is how the district is handling or has been handling. What is the system in place around safety? So I really wanted to call that out because I could really feel how much work went in. And, and, you know, it's heartbreaking, right, that we even have to do this. And so for the fact that, that the staff, the cabinet members, and everybody who were on the stage were able to answer some very tough questions, I really want to acknowledge that. And that we got work to do, right? We got work to do with the community, with our parents, and the concerns are real. They are very heartfelt, both from, from, from our families and from our students. And also, I could feel it also from our side, right, from the district side. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I had an opportunity a couple weeks ago now to attend the Roseville Area Middle School theater production of Legend of Sammy Swamp. Some really good friends of ours, their son had one of the lead roles, and it was just a, it was just a fantastic presentation. You can just see, it was the first night that we went, and you can see the kids are excited and all that. And it was, but it was just wonderful. It was wonderful to be back in that, that theater. Special thanks and shout out to the production team led by Director Lindsay Owen and all the parent volunteers, but it was a fabulous, fabulous production. All right. Superintendent's report, Superintendent Jenny Lake.
Good evening. My report is a bit longer tonight because it's such an important topic. As mentioned, Roseville area schools hosted a community safety meeting on Wednesday, November 15th. The meeting was called to order in order to bring the community together in response to weapons being found this fall at Roseville area high school. I'm very grateful for a large community, community turnout, and I'm grateful for the partnership from the Roseville Police Department, Ramsey County Attorney's Office, the Be Smart Gun Safety Organization, Northeast Youth and Family Services, as well as the meeting facilities, facilitation conducted by Marnita's table. Chief Erica Scheider, Ramsey County Deputy Attorney Sam Clark, Assistant Superintendent Melissa Sonic, Principal Jen Wilson, and Northeast Youth and Family Services CEO Angela Louis DeMello all shared important information about juvenile crime in our city and county, as well as related law enforcement and judicial system processes. On the school slide, we shared about the state statute related to guns in schools, our discipline policy, the high school's behavior and reporting systems, available resources, and much more. Community members, students, and staff all shared their concerns about feelings of safety, rising rates of gun violence, and other concerns such as bathroom and hallway safety. If anyone in our community is interested, you may access the video recording of the community safety meeting on our district website by clicking on the safety and security link. Since the community meeting, we have taken a number of steps to address safety concerns, including hosting individual and group meetings. We've held them with a variety of students, staff, and families in our community. We have furthered our connection with the Be Smart Safe Gun Storage Organization as they will be speaking with all local school communities. I now participate on a newly established committee on student absenteeism organized by the Minnesota Department of Education. That includes Ramsey County and all school districts included in the county, as we know that juvenile crime and absenteeism are directly connected. We've connected with the Nonsmokers Association of Minnesota for additional resources in regards to vaping in our schools. Principal Wilson has convened many security-related meetings at ROS to reevaluate school safety systems. Later this week, Assistant Superintendent Sonic will be attending an informational session to explore emerging state-of-the-art gun detection technologies. And finally, the district will be working to develop guidelines that can be shared with our community in regards to crisis communications. I'm disappointed to share that we must postpone the second community meeting that was originally scheduled for December 6th, as Marnita's table is unavailable to us. It's essential that we engage all communities within our district, and we need more time to plan and work alongside our cultural liaisons to ensure our next community meeting not only happens, but is structured in a way that moves our safety and security efforts forward. And to your point, ensuring that it's a two-way community event. Please look for additional information in the coming weeks. In the meantime, we'll continue to work to find solutions to address concerns raised by our community. I'm incredibly grateful for the care and concern shown by our community through this challenge. And I'll say again, there's nothing more important than holistic safety of students and staff in Roseville area schools. Though I know we continue to make strides in addressing areas of concern, I also know that we have a lot of work to do as a school district and as a community to address safety and security issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Lake. Just a reminder to everybody that we have one meeting in December. It's Tuesday, December 12th, correct? If I'm not mistaken, it's the Truth and Taxation or Budget Hearing? One of those, so.
Truth and Taxation.
Okay, so we'll be here a little bit earlier. Yeah, I just want to remind everybody, one meeting in December.
And that's the meeting where our business director, Sherry Thompson, walks through the budget in a way that helps people understand how it relates to their taxes, their property taxes and all of that.
That's correct.
Which is timing because currently, over the last week or so, tax statements have been being received by residents in our community, so they may have questions about that.
And so for the public, that is an open meeting?
People can come and ask questions.
Come and ask questions.
So that meeting starts at 6:00?
6:00 o'clock with the board meeting start at 6:45. And I know that at that time, Director Thompson will also encourage folks to call her directly if they have questions about even reading their property tax statements. So even before that meeting, please reach out if you have questions about, again, your school district taxes.
Well, and again, just to, because people don't know necessarily how complicated all of this infrastructure is around schools and laws and rules. If it runs late, then we could always start the board meeting late. We can't start it early, but by law, we cannot begin the Truth and Taxation meeting until 6:00 PM because the philosophy of the legislature is that we want to give people a chance to finish work, go home, and get here if they want to. So we cannot start that meeting any sooner than 6:00 PM by law. All these little things that are out there that govern us, so.
How does that impact community input?
Community input will be at 5:30.
Yeah, so community input 5:30 before it. Then 6:00, the Truth and Taxation starts, hopefully to 6:45, but we won't cut people off.
No. Wanted to make sure people had that reminder. Okay, if there's no further business before the board, we stand adjourned. Thank you.